I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for coming tonight. I'd like to thank Brandon back there for videotaping us. We're going to be starting to videotape our meetings and putting them up on our website. And so in the next couple of days, we'll be looking forward to that. Thank you very much. And do have two written communication I'd like to acknowledge. One was from our French department, send a very nice thank you to us, thanking us for allowing the French department to host fifteen French students and also for allowing us to have our students go to France in March. We also have another written communication from Mary Bussey, Bussey from West Seneca, who would like to be elected to serve on the Bosse's Board of Education. We will be having a meeting on November twenty-third to vote in that election. We also have three people who have signed in to speak. And I just would like to remind people that at the beginning of each board meeting, we welcome district residents who have signed in prior to the meeting to speak in front of the board. This is an opportunity for the board to hear what you have to say, but it is not an opportunity for discussion. And you will be given three minutes to speak. And our first speaker is Lily Montgomery. Would you please state your address?
I'm Ms. McQuaid, here in Harlem, New York. Hello, I'm Lily Montgomery, a current sophomore at Amherst High School and Secretary of the GSA. On behalf of GSA, I would like to thank you for your continued support of the LGBT+ community. It is very important to us that the staff and administration of the Amherst Central School District are aware of the ever-changing landscape of the student body. We have students who do not identify as the gender they were assigned at birth, transgender identifies more than one slash all genders, gender fluid, or who are not conforming to a gender at all, agender. Although these terms may be confusing to some of you, we appreciate your ongoing support of us in making sure that all students feel accepted in the classroom and halls of their schools and feel safe in being who they truly are.
Thank you. I'm not a resident. Can I allow to speak still? No. Sorry. You could submit if you want to make a presentation, just if you want that information to be shared with people. Okay. And Mr. Jim Grant, please.
Yes, evening. Dr. Caricella and members of the school board. At the November fourth, 2014 board meeting, the board quietly and unanimously approved an agreement between Patrick Murphy and the district. Earlier this year, I requested a copy of this agreement under the Freedom of Information law. My request and subsequent appeal were denied by the district. In a letter from the superintendent, she noted that the request was denied because the agreement states that "the terms of this agreement shall not be disclosed to any third party." This is not a valid reason for denying the request because it is not one of the exemptions under the FOIL exemptions. More importantly, under the law, supported by numerous court cases, school boards cannot shield a document from disclosure under FOIL by agreeing to keep it confidential. The board has the authority to enter into an agreement on behalf of the district, but it does not have the authority nor the right to hide it from the public. In a recent letter to the district from Assemblyman Ray Walter, he informed the superintendent that promises of confidentiality in a public document do not exempt them from FOIL requests. As noted in the letter, Assemblyman Walter's opinion is supported by Mr. Robert Freeman, the Executive Director of the New York State Committee on Open Government. Members of the board have publicly stated that the board is transparent and that it follows the law. The denial of this FOIL request is one example where the board is neither transparent nor compliant. So, Dr. Caricella, I am asking you, as the President of the Amherst School Board, to reconsider my FOIL request and to follow the advice offered by Assemblyman Walter and Mr. Freeman. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Special community reports.
We have new, but the cabinet is, we have been trying to build structures, and we're currently working on the great time.
Thanks for your efforts on that.
It's my pleasure to see you. To introduce Mr. Andrew Freeman, who is one of our attorneys with Hach and Russ. And he's here this evening to talk about, really, it's about the Dignity for All Students Act. It is under DASSA, but in particular, the transgender policy and guidance document that we receive from the State Education Department. Really, the purpose for this evening is for you to just better understand the information that's being provided to us under the law and through the guidance document. What I would ask is that we allow him to go through the entire presentation and then hold your questions until the end, because you may very well have your questions answered by the time we get to the end of it. And then, so welcome, and thank you so much for coming here.
Okay. Well, thank you for having me. It's a pleasure to see all of you tonight. I'm here this evening to, just to talk about transgender youth and gender nonconforming youth student rights. You know, while it may be more prevalent in the news and we have a better awareness, the law actually isn't new. Just like Dr. Chavy said, the basis of the law here is from DASSA, for the Dignity for All Students Act. And so while we're going to be talking about some new terminology, again, the basis in law has been there for, since about 2010. So, just wanted to make sure that everyone knew that. Forgot how to look forward on this again.
See the arrow up here?
Okay.
There you go.
Okay. Why do the rights matter? Because schools have the obligation to provide a safe environment for all students. And it was just this January or July of 2015 that the New York State Education Department issued a guidance document, and it's my understanding that that was provided to you in preparation for tonight's meeting. So that would give you a real good backdrop on a state's position with regards to transgender student rights and gender nonconforming student rights issues. You know, when you take a look at the statistics, they're quite frankly alarming, that seventy-five percent of transgender students have reported that they were either physically harassed or physically assaulted, and that more than fifty percent of transgender youth attempt suicide once prior to their twentieth birthday. And so, again, that really serves as the backdrop for identifying, you know, how to move forward. What I always like to do, because I am giving more of these talks to boards, is really just go through a few basic definitions, just to set a backdrop. Transgender is an umbrella term for people whose gender identity and expression differs from their biological sex assigned at birth. And one of the discussions that I often have with superintendents, with building principals, or anyone in pupil personnel, is talking about using the right verbiage, because that really goes a long way, you know, when you're having these conversations with individuals and when you know, you know, the definitions and you know what terminology to use, it just helps that discussion. And so, a gender nonconforming, it's a term used to describe an individual whose expression differs from a stereotypical expectation. So, you could identify as a male, a female, or you could identify as both, and it could be as fluid as, you know, depending on the day. So, again, it is some combination as well. And then we talk about the transition process, where a person, you know, who is socially or physically aligned to one gender expression is actually different from the gender identity that associates from their assignment at birth. And so, how they transition to that new identity is all about in that definition. You know, how do we determine a student's gender legally? Again, if you go to the state ed guidance document, it recommends that a school accept a student's assertion. So, in most situations, a student making the assertion is going to be enough. Now, practically speaking, I think that we do have to divide it out into ages. We just had a discussion at the New York State School Boards Association Conference about this, and the discussion that State Ed was having with us suggested that, you know, if you're in elementary school, we want to work with the parents in order to make that decision. In the middle school, it was less clear, you know, would we be working with the parents or wouldn't we be working with the student, whether or not that assertion was enough? But it was very clear that in the high school, that, you know, if a student is making that assertion, that should be enough. So, you know, we're going to be working through this with many other school boards, and so as we learn information, we will share it with you. You know, again, confirming a student's gender, it may be that it's not only their assertion, but a confirmation from either the student or from an adult. And I think that if we're looking at elementary school students, we would like that confirmation from the parent, or at least to have that discussion. But we also have to think about, too, the reason you look at the healthcare provider, school staff member, or social worker may be that the student is not comfortable telling their parent this. And so, and it could possibly create an unsafe situation at home. And so, if the child feels more comfortable speaking to these other people about, you know, their gender identity, then we should be taking that information in and coming up with a plan on how to move forward. Again, going back to, a lot of my discussion is going to be based on that guidance document, and so State Ed does recommend this flexible approach. So, we don't want to be rigid, that, you know, unless we have this, we won't do that. Because, again, there is, you know, some students may not be comfortable or feel safe by making the assertion. You know, when you look at, you know, legally, what is our responsibility and where does our responsibility arise from? It's from New York State Education Law thirty-two oh one, which says that students have the right to the education. We have the Dignity for All Students Act. Again, back in 2009, that was passed, and it included gender identity back in 2009, and it also included some language that said actual or perceived. And so, again, these, this language is not new. It actually dates back to 2009 and has its roots there. Now, Title IX is actually an interesting amendment. When the Department of Justice and the Department of Education interpret Title IX, it's their interpretation that Title IX does protect transgender and gender nonconforming students. I will say that there has been some recent, there was a recent federal court case in Virginia where the federal judge did not see it that way. But again, the Department of Justice argued in favor of Title IX supporting these rights, and also the U.S. Department of Education. So, we're in a little bit of flux there. But when we look at our state, I have to give you recommendations and guidance based on our state. And the backdrop to our state is Governor Cuomo has a very big push for cementing these rights. And that's, and again, these rights already exist under DASSA. So, you know, I can't really give too much credence to the Virginia ruling at this time, because we have underpinnings both in education law, DASSA, which, again, confirms the position. We also have to be careful about privacy rights and student information. So, the Family Educational Rights Privacy Act does play a role. Just to maybe give you a practical scenario, you know, a transgender youth is a new entrant to Amherst. You know, at the prior school district, they might have been, you know, known as Jane, and they're coming to Amherst now known as Joe. You know, we don't have the right, when we receive those educational records, to go around telling everyone that, you know, Jane, you know, Joe was Jane. Those are educational records that are confidential to that individual, may only be shared with their consent, unless there is a legitimate educational interest. And at that point, there may be some sharing that we can do, but you can see how FERPA also comes into play here as well. When you look at thirty-two oh one, it says, "No person shall be refused admission or excluded from any course of instruction by reason of that person's sex." So, again, it's really clear in thirty-two oh one that we have this obligation. I mentioned the Dignity for All Students Act. It's actual or perceived and gender. So, again, these, this isn't new, like I've said a couple of times before. And then the U.S. Department of Education, discrimination based upon a person's gender identity and a person's transgender status. And when that becomes important is that, you know, if we're not following the guidance suggested by State Ed or what the U.S. Department of Education has opined, if a parent or a student makes a complaint, we'll be having a discussion with the Office of Civil Rights. And those are not always, you know, great discussions to have. What I like to say is, you know, we'd rather tackle issues here than have someone else tell us how we're going to tackle them. And again, I just reviewed FERPA and gave you an example of how FERPA may apply in, you know, in a situation. Now, what do we do with names and pronouns? You know, getting to maybe some practical advice. You know, if a high school student is transgender and they're looking to be called a he instead of a she, we should honor that request. However, when it comes to actually changing the educational record, I'm going to recommend that we only do that when there's a court-ordered name change. So, once there's a court-ordered name change, what we would do is going forward, we would change the record. You can't ever change a record going back, but we would change it going forward. But again, if the individual wasn't comfortable making a formal name change, you know, practically speaking, what you could do is, they could write their, you know, new name on a test. They could, you know, have notes turned in by their parents with their preferred name. It would just be that when it came to report cards and maybe standardized assessments, that, you know, that they would have to make, that they would be using their non-preferred name. What's sort of, what's working through the State Education Department right now is, for those situations, we're going to be having student identifier numbers that can, will sort of track the student. So, if a student has a different, you know, a preferred name from their original assigned name, you'll still be able to track that individual because the student number won't change. So, that's working its way through state education right now. Again, but I am going to suggest that I'm only doing, you know, changing records based on a court document. So, again, just going with the names and pronouns, what I have found, because, again, a number of these situations are propping up in districts all over Western New York. And, you know, what I say to the administration is, have a conversation with the student and develop a plan. And that plan may be to work with your parents and, you know, talk about the issues that, you know, we're going to be confronted with. And when you talk with students and engage them about these changes, you know, it's amazing how successful they can be for everyone involved, you know, talking about the rights of various individuals and how to get you to a place where you can be most successful in school. So, we're recommending having that open discussion. You know, school and parent interaction. You know, if we're talking about a high school student, you know, and we have a counselor who wants to call their parents, I think that the counselor should make sure that the child knows what's going on first, so that they don't go home and are, for lack of a better word, ambushed, you know, without knowing that this was going, you know, that a counselor was going to say something to them, because there could be safety concerns and lack of acceptance. So, again, I think having an open, frank discussion is always best. Additionally, schools should, you know, confer with students as to, you know, what is the preferred name? What is the preferred pronoun, you know, that you would just use in general here in school? Just, you know, we have to keep in mind that even some of our policies that you wouldn't think would have an impact here do have impacts, unforeseen impacts. And this was a great example in the State Ed guidance, that, you know, for years, we've had graduations where the males wear blue and the, maybe the females wear white, and you don't think much about that. And I think nowadays, we do have to reconsider that. I actually have one school district who probably won't be able to do anything this year, but next year, they're looking at going to all one color, you know, because that, you know, it's just something that you wouldn't think has a consequence to it, or, but it actually does have probably unintended consequence. So, SCD guidance encourages schools to eliminate policies unless they have a clear pedagogical purpose. Okay. Sort of, you know, the big question. What do we do about restrooms, changing facilities, and extracurriculars? This is pretty well settled law here in New York. When it comes to restrooms, the individual gets to use their preferred, their preferred bathroom. So, if it's a male who's now identifying as a female, and they insist on using the ladies' bathroom, that is what we must do. And it's settled law here in New York. When it comes to changing facilities, it's the same rule, is that students get to use, have access to their preferred gender identity facility. And to, you know, if we don't allow that, my biggest concern would not only be from the U.S. Department of Education, the Department of Justice, but it really, it goes back to DASSA, where we cannot discriminate on the basis of actual perceived gender. And so, I would be concerned about that from a legal perspective. Again, having these talks nowadays to various stakeholders, you know, when you talk to kids, they seem to have much more comfort, and honestly, they don't really notice anything. They go into the locker room, you know, everyone's self-conscious about what's going on. You know, when you think back to your, you know, your days, we would, you know, get in there, change quick, and run out. And that really hasn't changed. I mean, it really is the same thing. So, you know, kids, it's miraculous how, this has probably, you know, been happening for the last couple of years, and, you know, we as adults may, you know, be unsure about that, but honestly, kids are just running around and going on to their next project. So, I hope that gives a level of confidence. General neutral bathrooms. You know, all of these, with a bathroom, with locker facilities, and with even a gender-neutral bathroom. You know, it may be that after you have a discussion with the student, that part of that transition plan is for, you know, them to use a gender-neutral bathroom, or for them to use a different area of the locker room in order to change, because they may, you know, they may have some, you know, have some preferences as well. And so, again, that's where I think that, you know, if students understand that we care and that we're really looking to develop a plan in good faith with them, and that we realize that, you know, that, again, it's about doing what's best for them, that, you know, it may be that they just don't jump right over and go to here or go to there, that there is some transition period. So, I do encourage some, again, really genuine discussion on these issues. But again, I guess if brass tacks comes down and we're talking about law, we should enforce that requirement upon students to use the general neutral bathroom or to use the gender bathroom that they were assigned at birth. So, again, and this is especially true when there's a new student who comes in, and that might only serve to quote-unquote "out that student." I did, you know, I try and always give my clients good news, but that doesn't always work, so I have to give you a little bit of not-so-good news. And here, this was a school district in California, and the district, you know, was not prepared to allow transgender students to access the bathrooms that were consistent with the student's gender identity. So, the U.S. Department of Justice came in, ordered them to, and then the student filed a civil complaint against the school district, and that was recently just settled for about nine hundred thousand dollars. And so, these are translating not only into, you know, we need to do what's right, but when we don't, when we're not looking at the laws this way, it's becoming a financial burden, and it does expose us to liability. And so, that is obviously a concern for me as well. Okay. Well, you know, again, I just wanted to give you a brief overview. I know that you have a copy of it, as well as the guidance document, and I hope that that guidance document gave you, you know, a flavor for the state education's position. Is there any questions that I can answer for you?
I guess, my question, I guess, is probably more directly to the district. How are you planning on giving this information to families?
We, right now, what we did, we had actually come to one of our cabinet meetings, and the first thing we did was to educate our administrators. And then, at the building level, some of our building levels have educated our staff as well on opening day. So, that's really the first step, is to make sure that as a district, we, at this point, we have, we will have the presentation, obviously, this evening on our website. We will also have, we also have the guidance document posted on our website for families to go to. And we encourage, you know, families to be aware of that, and if they have specific questions, to contact the building level principal for their specific questions. I think beyond that, I think there's some personal responsibility, too, for families to be aware of this and to, you know, seek the information. Again, it's been what we followed all along under the Dignity for All Students Act, and so that's another place to go. Our policy manual regarding the rights of all students is very clearly outlined, and then our administrative regulation manual is even more clearly outlined in terms of some of the actions that we take to make sure that all students are treated equally and fairly and well protected.
And I can say that we had a great discussion, you know, with the administrative team. They asked a lot of questions. You know, we talked about implications, practical implications, and we got some good feedback.
Yeah, it was very helpful. You know, it's always a good reminder, quite honestly, of just, you know, how we operate as a district and how we protect the rights of our students.
Well, thank you very much.
I have a question.
Okay, go ahead.
And here, dignity for all students, but what about, I guess, you know, it seems like all the court cases that I've read up on revolve around the bathroom facility, you know, the restrooms, the locker rooms and stuff. What about the students that are in there that don't feel comfortable? I mean, it seems like, dignity for all students, but there's a whole block of students that may not feel comfortable that, with the transgender, for example, going into the locker room, that, how do we deal with that? How is...
You know, that's a commonly asked question, and many people have that same, you know, concern. But the law's clear here, is that, you know, even though... even though, you know, we respect all student rights, transgender students clearly have the right to access the, uh, facility of their gender identity that they have chosen. Um, and so while we do, we care about all students, specifically, um, a transgender student has that right. And so, um, for us to deny them, um, that right would, again, open us up to liability and, um, you know, and court action. Or it may not be court action, it could just be a complaint from the Office of Civil Rights. And so, um, you know, the, i- it's, it's pretty, it's defined clearly.
You mentioned in your presentation, I mean, what if there's flip-flopping going on? One day, I'm, you know, identify as a female, next day I'm, I'm a male. I mean, how do we deal with that? Is it, is that allowed? I mean, is that?
Yeah, I think that we're going to have to, you know, again, have counselors that have fluid plans, um, you know, that, that take all of those, um, you know, variables into consideration. You know, um, it's interesting that State Ed documents came out and it talked about a plan. And so, um, the first thing I thought of was, well, this was interesting because it didn't say written plan. You know, if State Ed wanted us to have a written plan, like, yeah, you know, mostly everything is written, um, they would have said so. So, um, you know, I think that these are discussions that we have, they're fluid. And, um, you know, remember, a, a child may be vacillating like that because they're having, you know, uh, trying to internalize how they are going to change. And so one day it may be that, you know, um, they have courage to be able to express their new gender identity. And, um, it could be that the next day, um, they don't have that courage. And so to work through those issues with students, um, you know, we've been around working with students, um, and, and their, and, and challenges for years. And so, um, you know, we can turn it around and think that, you know, it, it's an exciting time to be able to help a new set of students who, when you look at those, um, statistics, um, have really, um, you know, um, had some difficulties in school. And so hopefully, you know, we'll look back ten years from now and, and you won't see that one in, you know, fifty percent have attempted suicide, you know, by the time that they're twenty.
I, I think the other thing too that you hit on is it really is about the relationships that you build with your children in your classrooms, in your buildings, as counselors. And that's exactly right. I think that when students feel very comfortable in that environment and have a really high level of trust with an adult in the building, then they can have those conversations. And it may be that that child would prefer to have a gender-neutral location because they are struggling with that. And that could be a suggestion that you would make that might help them, you know, kind of get through a very difficult time for them, but perhaps not. And I think that's the point. If it's not, then that's okay. But if it is, then those might be really valuable conversations to have with those children. And it's based on the great work that our teachers and our counselors and our psychologists and our principals do.
Every day.
With our kids every day. And so that's where the value of having those conversations and knowing your kids just becomes so instrumental. And then it helps the other children also become, I mean, look at how far we've come with acceptance in so many other areas, not only in our school world, but in our, our whole world. And so, you know, it's just, you have to have patience and guidance and support and, you know, just have conversations about it. And this is part of it. Education is a huge part of it. So that's why we felt to make sure our administrators are educated, our teachers, you as a board of education, our community is educated about this is the most critical factor.
Well, and, and one other factor that's so critical, um, with these discussions is showing compassion. Um, you know, again, um, you know, when the student understands that you care and that you're working, um, you know, you're developing a plan that works for not only them, but for everyone, um, and they know that you're invested, um, it really, um, the situations that we've been working with recently have been just smooth.
I guess, taking the parent out of it though, that, that I, I guess I don't understand that maybe, I don't know, maybe half the times. But is there any other thing that the parents get removed from? Like you were using the example of elementary and then middle and then high school. I- is there any other issue that parents aren't involved in?
Yeah, and, and, you know, um, when I said, um, you know, let me just maybe walk that back a little bit. You know, again, if you're a high school student, um, you know, and, and, and you're, you know, uh, in school and, and you're moving towards changing your gender identity, um, and, and you say to the counselor that, um, I'm really concerned that if I tell my parents that it's going to create an unsafe situation at home. You know, I think what we as a school have to be doing is working with that student to get them to a place where they can tell their parents.
Well, all right, let me give you another example. Let's say they're cutters. Okay. And they're going to the counselors and they want their parents to know about the cutting. What about that?
Well, I, I mean, cutting is different. Um, you know, again, cutting, i- i- you actually see a physical, um, you know, cut where there could be infection, it could be a medical issue. Um, I, I, I'm not sure that that's necessarily apples to apples.
It's the only one I could think of.
Yeah.
But it's, I, I guess, I, you know, listen, I, I talk to people that, that, you know, when the kids go to college and mine don't yet. The, one of the biggest transitions is you've now are basically out of their lives. From the standpoint, from legal or, or whatever, you know, the example always is, you know, something happened to them medically, you can't find out. All right? You know, it's whatever, whatever that law is, you know. So. Might be cut off. Have, whatever, yeah, whatever. But, so it, it just seems to me is that circumventing the parent, really in anything, I, I'm not a real fan of.
Well, and, and again, I, I, you know, I, I'm not suggesting.
You can, that example that you used, or they used, or if you used it, New York State or, you can, you can use it for almost anybody.
Uh, again, I, 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 I wouldn't encourage, again, for any situation, I want to include the parent. But, but I guess we have to be mindful of here is that if the parent is going to, if it's going to create an unsafe environment for the student at home, we, we have to be careful from a liability perspective. That, again, if, um, you know, the counselor calls home, um, doesn't tell the student, um, the student's parents react in a way that we wouldn't want them to for safety reasons, um, it may be said that we sent that child into an unsafe, uh, situation without notice. And, and so, um, you know, again, I, I'm not encouraging, you know, these decisions to be made in a vacuum. What I'm saying is, is that we have to show some sensitivity so that we can figure out what the plan is to bring your parents in, to get everyone on the same page. And, and, and I think that that can be done sooner than later, but you have to have mindful and, and, you know, honest discussions about that. And, and again, counselors are trained to do that all the time.
In that example, in that example though, to, you know, you mentioned the statistic, you know, fifty percent of, of transgender will try to commit suicide by age twenty. What if the school knows about the transgender situation, but the parent does not and we're working through it? And something like that happens. Do we have liability then? Where we know about it, we haven't gone to the parent and the parent now is, you know, we know.
You know, um, again, what we have to do is we have to provide a reasonably safe environment for students. We, we, we're not guarantors of safety. So your question is, you know, what is our duty to that particular student? And what I would argue is, is that we were acting in the student's, um, you know, best safety interest. Um, that when we took a look at the whole picture and all the circumstances surrounding it, we aren't responsible. Now, this is New York. Um, people can sue people for a lot of reasons. Um, but again, what we have to focus on for legal liabilities in school is, are we creating a reasonably safe environment? It's not a guarantee of safety. So I would, I would argue in, in, in that situation, um, that we acted reasonably safe.
Would it be, would it be likened more to an issue for child protective services?
Where we suspect child, we simply call, we don't want to have the issue correct.
Right, without having to. So if there is an assumption, and there may not be anything there, but if there's assumption, you don't contact the parent because it could be harmful.
I think the only difference would be in that situation. In this situation, I think what, um, Andrew was saying, that you would hope through conversations, you would hope through counseling, you would hope through supports, that eventually you would come to terms with having that conversation with the parent in a very supportive environment. When child protective services is involved, it's a very different situation because you are not asking a child to engage in a conversation, to bring the parents in and start talking about those abusive issues. You can't. It's different. Just like in, you know, to your question too, Paul, if we had a situation where we had a child come in and we knew that they were dealing with their identity, transgender identity, and then threatened something with suicide, then we have an obligation. That's a very different scenario. And we know what we need to do as a school district to take action to make sure that that child is taken care of. I mean, it's a very, very specific outline. You know, we've all unfortunately been in those situations. That's very different than making an assumption that just because the child could perhaps be transgender, that's a possible, that they may have that kind of psychological.
Or even the CPS situation that you referred to, um, you know, the quagmire there is, um, this is based, you know, our concern that the parent may react, um, in, in an unsafe way is based upon conversation. Unless we had any concrete fact that that would have, you know, did occur, we're, you know, we're in a gray area of law.
Do, do we need to develop a specific policy or because of DASSA, we already have a policy?
You know, a great question. Um, we don't need a specific policy. Um, BOSIS has circulated a policy. Um, and so there is one out there. Um, and Dr. Chaby and I have been speaking about it. Um, but it's not mandatory. And so if you decide not to move forward with a policy, um, you know, my recommendation to Dr. Chaby is, you know, that we want to educate people. We want staff to know that, you know, this is our expectation, um, that, you know, it's based in law and it's based on the policies that we already have in effect. Um, so no, I don't, um, believe that we need another policy. But again, BOSIS has circulated a policy. Um, and boards are, I, I'm sure, you know, as board members, you, um, you know, heard the talk around town that, you know, certain boards are considering it and others aren't. Um, at this particular point, um, I'm leaning towards leave the policies that we have in place and educate, um, you know, our faculty.
And I would say to follow up on that, I think where it belongs after looking at this and talking with Mr. Friedman is more in administrative regulation because that are the procedures that we are specifically following in terms of how we deal with these issues as opposed to having it be policy. It's our guiding document to make sure that we're doing everything that we need to be doing under the DASSA umbrella, I guess.
Is this an ever-changing, I mean, obviously there's some, you mentioned the Virginia case. And from what I saw, that it's in some appeal at this point.
Yes.
You know, the, if that be, you know, gets ruled on in appeal, I mean, is it become case law, for example? I mean, is it going to govern what happens? I mean, are, are some of these court cases out there going to cause changes to how we look at all this?
You know, I'm pretty confident here in New York, the answer is no. Again, because, um, Virginia doesn't have the underpinning of DASSA. So, it, that's the, the real fundamental difference between New York and Virginia. That they don't have a statute that already protects gender identity. So unless DASSA changes, and again, um, you know, given, right now at least where the governor stands on these issues, um, i- i- it looks fairly firm, but, you know, law is ever-changing. And, um, a- and, and I don't think it's going to here in New York. Um, I, I definitely see a, um, a sort of a patchwork approach, um, you know, that will be happening over the next, you know, number of years. But, um, I, I'm fairly confident that here in New York, we're, this is the, you know, where we're going to end up. And so that's why, um, I, I would just encourage us all to embrace it. Um, you know, do what we have to do to educate and really move on because that's what the kids will do.
Any more questions? Cause I know we have another presentation this evening as well.
I just had a consistency one, which is kind of a follow-up from what I was deciding with. So, you could have a transgender student being a non-collaborant who is more competent one day than the next in terms of using your restroom or, or facility. But you could also have someone who's just doing it on a dare for the, the fun of it.
Mm-hmm.
And in terms of that consistency, isn't there some way just to, or is that left up?
Yes, that, yeah.
To the discretion of the administrator? So that we're truly being sensitive and following the law for some reason?
Right, we talked about that too.
Versus someone who's doing it for nothing?
We did that scenario at the administrative cabinet.
Okay.
Um, and really where we're at is, you know, if someone misuses this law, there's consequences.
Okay.
It's treated as such. It's treated as a consequence for a disciplinary, you know, it's whatever that consequence would be for a violation of behavior, really.
I think that's important for people.
It's very important.
I was just going to say, maybe we should educate people on that as well.
Right, I think that's important.
So we don't get people flip-flopping, as you say, on a dare or something, so it's, it.
What underpins this legislation is the notion that you're doing it, um, with good intentions. That this is what you intend to be. This is not meant to be used as a joke. Um, and, 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 you know, I.
But as we educate people, I think, and as you see, well, they can, you know, one day they can identify as this and the next day is this. And I understand, you know, they may feel uncomfortable one day and comfortable the next. But you may also get teens who are, as, as Dr. Lane says, doing it as a joke. So how do we, I, I think by public, you know, by educating people that this is possible, you're al- we're also educating teens that, hey, tomorrow I want to go in the girls' locker room or the boys' locker room. And, you know, so educating them also, I think, as well on the punishments for false reporting, I guess.
Yeah, I mean, I would, I would absolutely support that because, again, um, I, I, I think that those jokes, um, would be seen as harassing, um, you know, transgender students. And, and again, we're doing this, um, you know, for those people who genuinely, um, you know, are grappling with this issue versus people who are joking. So, um, you know, just like any other disciplinary incident, um, I, I, I'm a believer in fair consequence. Well, thank you so much for having me.
I appreciate you.
Yes, I have a very happy Thanksgiving and holiday season.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do you want your water, Andrew?
As we're transitioning, I just wanted to have a public service announcement. If you do have an eighteen-year-old child, please talk to your lawyer about, uh, having them sign a HIPAA release so that if, God forbid, anything did happen to, to, um, any hospital.
Thank you again.
Might be, uh, being taken care of by. Just like we have our, our significant others, um, speak with doctors about our conditions, we also have to be able to ask our children to do the same thing. For eighteen is a magic, magic bullet.
All right, thank you.
Are we moving on?
Yes.
Okay. Um, well, I'd like to introduce you to one person and reintroduce you to another. Um, on your right is Marcy Pasquale. She is our new elementary curriculum team leader from Windmere Elementary School. She teaches a self-contained special ed class in grades. Now it's only two, it's generally a K to two, um, but the enrollment changes and so does the grade level, the grade levels that she services. Um, you're familiar with Lori Chittenden, um, one of our primary teachers at Smallwood. She's been our math curriculum leader for the last three years. And they're both here to join me in giving you an update on our elementary ELA and math curriculum. Um, as you may recall, uh, a year or so ago, we transitioned from, um, presenting the data, so to speak, at this, at this meeting to providing you with a pretty comprehensive data profile for you to look at, um, on your own. And talking about more the curriculum, the work that's going on here. Uh, the principals in their presentations are also going to talk about how they use the data within their buildings to help drive instruction. So if there's questions about the data, when you're going through it and putting it, um, in its context, it can either, they can either come up in the presentations and during the building updates or certainly you can email me at any point that you have a question and I'll get back to you as soon as I can. So Marcy's going to start with, uh, an update on where we are with ELA. And then Lori will jump in with math.
Good evening. Lori and I are very excited to be here tonight to present to you the happenings at the elementary level in terms of ELA and math. So, um, to get started, our ELA committee is comprised of twenty. So to get started, our ELA committee is comprised of 20 teachers. We have representatives from pre-K through fifth grade from both Smallwood and Windmere. Our committee was charged with two goals. We met for two days over the summer, and again, we met in October. Our first goal was to develop a staircase curriculum for word study, pre-K to five. Our second goal was to develop content area units of study utilizing a balanced literacy framework. And you'll see more in the next few slides about these two goals. We're very fortunate to be under the guidance of Dr. Shanahan. She's an expert in the field of curriculum development. She's a curriculum consultant through School Rise. And she brought to us this idea of a staircase curriculum, which is based on the work of Kathy Au and Taffy Raphael, who are the founders of School Rise. They did 10 years' worth of research and data collection to support the notion of a staircase. And the committee met, when we met over the summer, we spent a good amount of time really digesting this article, reading it, discussing it, highlighting key points and takeaways so we could really develop our background knowledge and our understanding of a staircase so that we could effectively go ahead and start the creation of our own staircase relative to word study in the elementary level. So this is a visual of a staircase, and it really serves as a nice representation for teachers to really understand the importance of collaboration within grade levels and across grade levels. So you can see that pre-K through five, it scaffolds up. And the staircase curriculum really allows us to ensure cohesion amongst and within grade levels. So our first step as a committee was to utilize external benchmarks, external, external standards, the state standards, Fountas and Penelope, their literacy continuum, as well as teacher-created materials, and our own teacher expertise within our grade levels to develop end-of-year benchmarks. So our first step was to meet with our grade levels, develop these end-of-year benchmarks utilizing a various source of resources. And then we posted them actually in the, in the, in the room. And we could see across grade levels, and we met vertically. We would go down to the grade level before us, look at the grade level beyond us, and really ensure that our benchmarks were cohesive. We didn't have any major gaps in our instruction. We didn't have any overlaps in our instruction. And we had really great conversations. The teachers really collaborated together and really took this on full force to really ensure that we were instructing in a cohesive manner to really see that student achievement and hopefully see it over time. We also brought this, we, we looked at this staircase again in October. We made revisions to the staircase as a committee. And Kathy Au and Taffy Raphael really talked about, and they found that literacy achievement is, is improved and their sustained achievement over time when teachers really take ownership of the curriculum, when we become creators of the curriculum as opposed to just receivers of the curriculum. So we really wanted to engage not only the committee, but take it to our grade level and really elicit feedback from them, which is what we did two weeks ago. Can we just go back to the slide? That's okay. Okay. So we're going to just flip it there. Yeah. So here's an example that you'll see of a second-grade staircase. You'll note that the black font was what the committee developed as benchmarks. The green font was revisions that were developed and recommended from the grade level when we presented these staircases to our grade levels when we met lab two weeks ago with Dr. Shanahan. So the grade level reps in the committee really did a nice job facilitating the rollout of this curriculum, walking their, their team members through the creation of how we looked backwards, we looked forwards. So the green font is revisions and recommendations from the grade level. The blue font is from other grade levels. So in this instance, first grade, third grade looked at the second-grade staircase and thought, well, maybe we should talk to second grade about, is this a second-grade skill? Is this third grade? Is this first grade? So the blue font just kind of developed through the process of revising the staircase and we need to bring it back to the second-grade team and say, well, this is what third grade thought of this. Let's talk about it and let's come to a consensus so we're not redone in our teaching so that we can have our entry and exit points be cohesive pre-K, five. It is important to note that those end-of-year benchmarks that are developed are for your average kiddo at their grade level, knowing full well that we'll have kiddos below and above. So that's the nice thing about the staircase, that if we're working on a second-grade staircase and we have a kiddo that's struggling, we can then look back at the first-grade staircase and see what we can do as teachers to support those kiddos in the same fashion that we could then look ahead to the third-grade staircase to extend the learning for kiddos that are achieving at a higher level. So it really provides a nice continuum that we can be flexible and look above and below to support students and their various abilities. We will come back again to this. The, the teachers have all received copies of this staircase. They're going to be working with it throughout the year, making notes, making revisions, and then we'll come back together as a committee in June and talk about revisions and get from feedback that we, we elicit from the faculty throughout the year. Our second goal was to work on developing content area units of study within a balanced literacy framework. We utilized the units that were developed two summers ago, the social studies units. And in addition to that, we came up with a Common Planning template that we could utilize K through five so that we are ensuring that we're teaching content area, teaching content within the curricular areas of ELA. Throughout this brainstorm period and the development, development of this template, we were really mindful of the six shifts in ELA. So that was always in our discussion of where we're going to input our academic vocabulary, where are we going to highlight our response to sources, where are we going to highlight text-based evidence? So we really made sure to keep those shifts in the forefront. In addition to the Thoughtful Classroom Teacher Effectiveness Framework, we wanted to make sure that the dimensions were highlighted so we know that if it's early on in the unit, we're presenting new learning, but we're getting to the application phase, phase, and it's very fluid throughout the unit. So we were very mindful of those two elements when we were coming up, we were collaborating on the template.
If I can just interject a clarification with the shifts, that's the connection to the Common Core learning standards. If you remember when Mr. Penelope did the presentation and talked about the various shifts related to that. So just to kind of inform Mr. Bott's sake too, because he didn't have the luxury of being here the last couple of years to kind of hear about all of the Common Core. That's where that connection comes in with the Common Core learning standards.
Okay, so the next slide, we're just, I'm going to take you to an example of what the planning template looks like. So you'll see at the top, we have the Thoughtful Classroom Division, followed by the Content and Language Arts Standards, the curricular components, followed by the objectives, the learning targets, and then at the bottom is key vocabulary and definitions that will be addressed throughout the unit. And here is a grade three example from their unit on countries around the world. This is a session two, so it's day two in the unit. They're in dimension six, which is presenting new learning. They have their content standards identified as well, as well as the language arts. The curricular components addressed on this day are within shared reading slash close read and in their content area. So they give their objectives, their content learning targets, which would be explained to the students, key vocabulary and their definitions, and then this is the planning. So they're using a grade level text. They have their thinking within and beyond the text for a close read, and their conceptual understanding using a key vocabulary word. This day also incorporates a content area designated to the unit, and it goes through what that would look like. So really, the key idea and the, the big notion in our minds when we were developing this is, we want to think of ELA as a vehicle to teach content. So in what ways can we input, input content within our day in the curricular areas and the, in, you know, word study and guided reading and interactive read aloud? So where can we fit in this content so our kiddos are being, you know, immersed in this academic vocabulary and this rich text and, and is very, and making it engaging and connecting it for the kiddos as well? So the next slide is just what's next for ELA. So we're going to continue to teach towards those identified benchmarks on the staircase for word study instruction, come back together as a committee in June, and talk about revisions and changes that need to, need to be made based on teacher feedback. We are going to teach our content area unit within the balanced literacy framework and provide feedback. That will then be brought to our meeting in June. Changes, revisions will be made with the goal of making the unit ready to be dispersed to our grade level teammates for use next school year.
Before we transition into math, I just want to point out a few things. Curriculum development is very difficult in schools. In many cases, sometimes it's avoided altogether. ELA curriculum development is difficult. Elementary ELA curriculum is probably the most difficult because you're dealing with skills. You're not necessarily dealing with content in a social studies classroom where you're teaching, you know, the Constitution through the causes of World War II and its progression and its sequential. You're dealing with skills and the acquisition of skills with kids that are just learning how to read and write. So what our committee has done that I think is, is very special and sort of unique to our district is we have developed a curriculum based on our foundation of balanced literacy. So when you look at a balanced literacy approach, it includes the interactive read alouds, it includes guided reading, we're talking about shared reading, writer's workshop, those elements. We had a balanced literacy commitment in this district for a long time, and I think unfortunately, you may have seen in some areas across the state or even the country, with the onset of the Common Core learning standards, some people got away from that as a philosophy or an underpinning within their, you know, emphasis within the curriculum. We didn't do that. And I think one of the other things we didn't do, which we should be proud of, is we didn't switch to a basal reader, or we didn't switch to sort of a canned program. What we've done is really invested our time and effort and energy into growing our teachers' content knowledge within the balanced literacy framework to make sure that they're able to move fluidly within those components of the framework to meet the needs of the kids that are sitting in front of them because they vary greatly, especially with the foundational reading skills.
And if I can just say in a more global view of it, when we started with the whole instructional action plan, we started talking about these curriculum writing projects. This is phenomenal. I mean, where we've come over the last four years, 45 years, in developing this curriculum and connecting it, it's just, it's, you know, it's, it's very, very impressive. And you should all be truly, as Tony said, so proud of the work that you've done with this because it was a vision that we created and as, you know, Mr. Penelope said, it's a very, it was a very difficult task, and what you've been able to do with it is so impressive, just so impressive, truly.
Mrs. Pascal, I have a couple of questions. I think you've addressed one of them. As a new board member, I just was curious, the timeline, you're in year four of this initiative, is that accurate?
Yeah, it started in summer of 12.
Summer of 12, so probably three years.
So, three years. And I get made fun of for using this analogy, but curriculum's like a garden. It's constantly being cultivated. Seeds are constantly being planted, things grow, we're pulling weeds, we're replacing things.
The instructional action plan was developed in, like, 2011, and we were able to start the actual writing in 12. And then, is this not wrong?
My second question, Mrs. Pascal, and Mr. Penelope could jump in if you want. How has this impacted the young students' writing skills? Could you talk about that a little bit? I know you talked about reading and all that, but how's it affected or how is it impacted by that?
Well, I now speak for me personally, you know, I have kiddos in, in K through two, and, you know, some are, you know, able to comprehend by listening auditorily more than they can read. So I have found that through immersing them in this content area within the curricular components of ELA, that they're hearing the language, they're being immersed in it, they're using the vocabulary in various contexts, and they're applying and generalizing, which does translate into their writing. A lot of it's verbal at first where, you know, you're going to speak in complete sentences. So if I ask you a content-specific question, you're going to answer that question using, and they do use the, you know, the science words, they like to speak like scientists, speak like, you know, you know, sophisticated, you know, little beings. And we do see that translate into their writing where they are able to cite evidence from tests based on, you know, a specific question. And, you know, sometimes their writing skills aren't as advanced as their verbal skills, but they can get their ideas down and then verbally explain it. And then when they get up through the grade levels, we can start to see that more and more in their writing. But at the lower levels, it's their oral comprehension, their oral ability to, to speak, and then, you know, their auditory ability to comprehend, which is at a much higher level than their writing and reading ability. But it is starting to.
What Yashu was.
Well, the hard part about the, the question you asked, because it's a great one, is our ability to assess that is somewhat minimized with constant changes in the assessments that are given and then inconsistent participation in the assessments that are given. So we're relying more on formative assessments in the classroom or other diagnostic assessments that the teachers have developed. And, you know, it would be inappropriate to generalize, but what I can tell you about, as a positive about the curriculum is that a lot of this stuff was going on, and a lot of great stuff was going on in most of the classrooms. What this gave us the ability to do was to really vertically align it so we look at how kids progress from pre-K through fifth grade and then transition to middle school so that we're more aligned with our students moving from classroom to classroom and we're building upon the previous years. So the visual of the staircase is really an important piece because at the elementary, we're moving from, with word recognition or word study, we're moving from, you know, phonemic awareness and phonics all the way through some pretty advanced morphology with gra, excuse me, Latin and Greek roots. And that's pretty sophisticated word work for, you know, nine, 10, and 11-year-olds. And we're pretty confident that that emphasis on vocabulary and the roots from where words come from is going to have a significant impact on their ability to read and acquire knowledge through reading, so, and then ultimately writing. Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to math. The math curriculum team is organized and structured very similarly to the ELA committee. We have representatives from both Windermere and Smallwood for each grade level and that work during the summer. We also work during the school year also on some of the projects. Whoa. I couldn't have had. I'm not going to go through every timeline, timeline bullet here, but I did include it because I wanted you to have some of the details of our journey also. And I was able to speak to you last year about some of the things that we had worked on and done, starting in the summer of 2012 and then moving forward. So you can kind of look through that, you know, as we go. But, and I want you to understand the process that we went through to kind of get to where we are today, and I'll explain that to you. We were using, you can go ahead. We were using investigations as our main program for math instruction in grade K through five. And as we became more familiar with the standards and wrapped our heads around them and, you know, really kind of digested them, we realized that there were some gaps and holes in the program that we were using. So what I talked to you about last year was that the committee worked together to address those gaps and holes, and we created the Empress Central School District Math Curriculum Guide. We started supplementing, we kind of pushed in some of the fluency activities that we had stolen from Engage New York, not stolen, but used from Engage New York. We got a P what with that. We also included vocabulary that was important to the math programs in each grade level. But we, we still noticed that we needed more. So the following summer, we supplemented even more, and some grade levels began even using full modules in their classrooms, some full grade levels. And what we noticed was that we had this kind of fragmented situation where, you know, we weren't as cohesive as we would have liked, K through five. So we, we needed to make a decision, and we needed to decide on one program as our main material. So what were we looking for in a program? So we were making that decision. We wanted to make sure that the material that we chose or used was aligned to the Common Core learning standards. We also wanted it to be coherent, K through 12, and we wanted it to focus both on conceptual understanding and that balance of having some procedural fluency in those mathematical practices included also. Those are the things we were considering. There was a company, I have reports, that did a review of curriculum programs, and this was in March of 2015, and it compared 20 programs. It measured, you can go to the next slide if you want. Here's the chart. It shows it measured indicators of alignment, usability, focus and coherence, and then rigor in practice. And what they found was that Rika Math met all of the expectations in all four areas. And this was one of the pieces that the administration used when they were discussing and considering in which direction to move. and considering in which direction to move. Some of the textbook companies gave some pushback and said that the review was done too soon. So the company did the review again just in October. And Eureka came out again pretty far ahead of the other textbook series. It earned sixty-three out of the seventy possible points that the rating scale could get, which was well above. After many discussions and considerations, the district made the decision to start using the Eureka Math program in both buildings, K through five. As we began to make this decision and knew that change was going to be coming, the administrators started really building the capacity for this change. They planned for two days of math summer training and brought in the Eureka writers, the people who wrote the curriculum, who were actually teachers also, for each grade level. And they were able to do a module study on one day, which was an in-depth study of the module, the concepts, the vocabulary, the math models, and how to teach those lessons. And then we also had a day of customization. So how do you make that lesson work for you in your classroom with your kids, knowing that every classroom is a little bit different? The district also purchased the Eureka web app for teachers and the video series to support this implementation. So the web app allowed teachers to have access to all of the lesson plans, all of the materials, everything online. So if you don't have your textbook with you at home, you have access to it anywhere, on your phone, forever. The video series also was purchased to make sure that teachers had what they needed to build their math content knowledge and be able to teach these lessons. The video series are the actual writers of the curriculum, talking you through each module lesson, talking about the math concepts and how that looks and feels and looks like in the classroom. Another big thing we did this summer was Tony's office. Donna and myself and Tony worked on creating an Aspen parent resource page to inform parents, because we know that that can sometimes be, or, you know, the communication needs to go also, not just to teachers and administrators, but parents need to know about the changes too. And changes in math can be challenging for parents. Definitely not the way they learned, it's very different, not the way I learned either. So we needed to provide some support. And I'll go through some of the pieces that are on that parent resource page in a minute. Grade level team meeting time was built into the schedules at both buildings by the principals at Windermere and Smallwood because they knew teachers would need time to put their heads together and be able to talk about this and collaborate in using a new material in this time of change. We've had grade level planning time to view and discuss those videos and talk about the module content. We just had staff involvement day today, which was at both buildings, at Smallwood and Windermere, and the trainers came in and did some major work at grade levels. So they looked at, we had kindergarten through second grade teachers at Windermere and three through five at Smallwood. The K through two teachers focused on addition and subtraction and what that looks like, all the way starting from kindergarten and what it looks like and how it builds upon in each grade level through grade two. So they talked about the models and the language, what the lessons look like. So she did a real in-depth study of that and what that looks like, what that content looks like. And in three to five, they did the same type of thing with multiplication and division and how that relates to then fractions and problem solving. The parent support page, like I talked about, has different tabs in it. So parents can click on the tabs and have these resources at their fingertips. These, the Aspen page was also introduced at Open House by the teachers. And we demonstrated how to access that and use that so that they had that knowledge. There's a section for focus areas, so parents can kind of see that overall picture of where their kid is going, their child is going in that grade level. There's parent roadmaps, which are a little more specific to what the students will be studying in that grade level. There's module tips for parents, so each module is like what we used to call a unit. So the parents can see the vocabulary and the models and the different strategies that kids will be learning in that specific module. And it's laid out with diagrams and pictures and labels so that it's user-friendly. And those module tips can also be sent home by teachers. There's topic newsletters, so within the module, the module's broken up into topics. So they further have resources that can walk parents through a certain topic and explain the mathematical thinking and practices. And there's also some video resource links that we put on there that model some of the key concepts. So just like in ELA, our journey will continue as we move through the school year and then into the summer. So the next thing that we were thinking of is to continue to grow that math content knowledge. We know that that's something that teachers want and that they always need to support them in using any kind of math program, whether it's new or something that we've used before. Some of the possible topics, and I guess I skipped over this, but we, in the timeline, part of what we did last year was we connected with another neighboring school district who had gotten a grant through New York State. And part of that grant was to invite other neighboring districts and grow, you know, grow that situation. So they invited us in. Mr. Penala sent the team leaders and some administrators to grow math content knowledge and to build capacity for this change. So we attended many of those presentations and a lot of them are listed here, which might be possible topics that teachers could sign up for and come to and attend in the summer of two thousand and sixteen. Things like building number sense and mental math skills, concrete typical to abstract approaches to addition, same thing for subtraction. There's one called Number Talks where kids are engaging in talking about problem solving and sharing different strategies. Concrete typical to abstract approach to fractions and then also for multiplication and division. So again, these are not Eureka module-specific, but it's really widening that, the math content knowledge of teachers.
I think one of the things that you'll notice as a, maybe a contrast between the two subject areas at this particular level is most elementary teachers, when they went to college to become teachers, focused on literacy and that was the primary focus for their development to become classroom teachers. So we had a strong foundation with our balanced literacy approach where we needed to address some inconsistencies or some gaps was our content knowledge in math. And that's not a slight to our teachers because I've been here many times and you know that I hold them a pretty high regard and I think they're outstanding professionals. It's just the fact of what they had experienced in their preparation to go into the classroom. The content knowledge for math that they're asked to teach now is drastically different under these new standards than it was previously. So our goal was to really have something that could be a foundation where we could build off of, to grow that content knowledge amongst our teachers and across the district in our classrooms. We certainly had some outstanding teachers at mathematics prior to this program. This isn't changing that. I think what this is allowing us to do is be more consistent as we go from kindergarten first and first to second. And I know I spent the morning, this morning, in the K to two training and there was many light bulbs that went on when teachers realized that some of the things they're asked to do at their particular grade level didn't make sense to them when they looked at them in isolation. But then when they looked at the second grade from kindergarten, they saw the progression and understood why they're building that foundation because it will benefit the students' understanding as they move through the program. So this is certainly a challenge that we have this year. And I think, you know, what is most remarkable about it is that our teachers are outstanding and they're making it work with their kids. And in many cases, they're one or two steps ahead of their kids because they're learning it, because it's new for them. And if anything, I think they deserve kudos for rolling up their sleeves and diving into this program because it's not easy to change programs. And certainly, we appreciate everything that they're doing to make sure that they're getting involved with it. I would tell you that one thing that is starting to become evident, which is interesting, I think it speaks to the culture of the district. I'm hearing from some of the teachers, you know, I just don't think it's engaging enough and I just don't agree with some of the pedagogy that's in this program. And I kind of smile because I think it speaks to the level of instruction that's going on in our classrooms where they're looking at this saying, no, I wouldn't teach it like that. You know, I can get them up and moving around or have them do this station here. And I think, you know, once they're through the program in its entirety, one year, we're really going to see them soar with it because they're going to be able to identify those areas where they want to improve it. Now they're just trying to live sort of day-to-day to make sure they get through it and that understanding will come and grow. And I think we're going to see some fantastic things as a result.
I just wanted to point just really clear on also in this area because we've watched this evolve and what we've wanted all along, as you are well aware in the classes every day, is to make sure that we were aligned, to make sure that we had that continuum of program, to make sure that we found that balance between the conceptual understanding and the fluency piece because we were just struggling with that. And, you know, a ton of, you know, a ton of hard work from the committee just on behalf of the district to really make sure. Are we there, as, you know, Mr. Penala said? No, we will always be looking for ways to improve, but just really impressive.
How do you see the transition from Investigations and modules that were being used to Eureka? Like, are the kids who are in second and third grade going to have a tougher time? Is there a different spot on the staircase? Yeah, for sure. We had dabbled a little bit, so it's not like they're going in, you know, with no experience with it. So in grades K through five, we had done the fluency activities, so they were a little bit familiar with those. And the teachers were also familiar with those routines and the language and things like that. So they kind of knew about that. The vocabulary too, they kind of dabbled in, not fully, but... And then some of the grade levels had already been supplementing with modules. You know, partly they were picking and choosing and pulling it apart at some point. And then the following summer, it became more evident that they were relying on it more and more. So some grade levels had actually had a full year of experience with it. So the answer to your question is, there's some familiarity, but yes. You know, you're obviously going to have, you know, we didn't implement it kindergarten one year, first grade the second year, that would have been ideal. But then you're looking at, you know, seven years down the road and we can't wait seven years to make that change happen.
Foundationally, they're similar. So if you look at Investigations and Eureka and the Common Core standards, all three of them are built on the NCTM standards and practices for mathematics. They're built on, in two thousand and two, research called Adding It Up. And there's some foundations from Singapore Math in there. So all three of those elements, Eureka Math Investigations and the Common Core Learning Standards, are built on a similar foundation. So it's not a huge leap. It's not like going from maybe a traditional math program to an Investigations or Eureka. The leap is more, it's not a leap.
I just, a couple of things. I can imagine Dr. Shanahan coming here and seeing what you guys are doing and going, yeah, that's what I'm talking about. Does she, like, when she and her colleagues talk to you about what you're doing, is there something that's the next step? Where do you take it from what you've done now? I mean, is there, is this where you want to be with it or what do you do next?
So in terms of ELA, like I mentioned, we're going to make another set of revisions in June when we get together as a committee to the staircase. And it's a working document, so we're going to continue to utilize it and make revisions and as, you know, your kiddos are going to change. But in terms of, you know, long-term projections, you know, we mentioned, it would be great to staircase every curricular area, vocabulary, reading comprehension, so that we know as teachers where our entry points and exit points for your average kiddo in that grade level. So I'm not sure what the, you know, contract is with the district as far as what her commitment is over years, but that's our goal. And what she's doing is helping myself and the committee really get ourselves immersed in this so that we can continue on with this type of development so we can ensure cohesion and consistency between the grade levels, even if she wasn't still here to actually guide us through it. So she's kind of laying the foundation and we're going to continue to build off of it. And it's something that the teachers want, we really want this consistency. So, you know, in terms of reading comprehension in grade two, do we have to always start with a declarative of what a prediction is? If they had it in K one, can we start with it more of an application of, you know, instead of back at the lower level skill? So that's kind of our long-term.
Do you think curriculum's like a garden?
I just have, well, I just have one more question. So is social studies and science, are they considered content within ELA? Is that how that works or where's science?
Well, that's a good question because time's an issue. And, you know, the elementary teachers that are in the classroom have a lot of demands on them. And the days of being able to carve out thirty minutes for just social studies or thirty minutes for just science seem to be behind us. Unfortunately, I think what we're trying to do in the template that Marcy showed you was look at our time a little bit differently and look at a thematic approach to how we're addressing content. So for example, if you say, if you talk about social studies, there's a great project that was led by S.G. Grant, which is, by the way, a former Empor's parent, but he's now out of the University of Binghamton. And it's called the C three Teachers Inquiry Project. And the basis for the inquiry project is to take the social studies framework, K to twelve, and to be able to identify compelling questions that you present to kids. And then there's formative assessments and writing tasks that go along with that. So an example of a compelling question might be, can words lead to war? And then you present that to kids and then there's some content knowledge that may be acquired through reading or input from the teacher. And then they might write about it. They might take a side, one way or the other. Yes, it can, and here's some of the evidence that I've pulled from what we've read to be able to support my argument. Or you know what, they can't. You know, the first shot has to be fired before there can be war. Words can't lead to war and then here's the evidence I'm using to support my claim. So what we're doing is studying that framework along with the other things that Marcy mentioned, our thoughtful classroom teacher framework, our philosophy for balanced literacy, combined with word work and all of the other things that are on the plates of elementary teachers. And we're trying to make sure that we're using our time as wisely as we can because unfortunately, it's not always possible to carve out just, you know, thirty minutes a day for social studies or science. You might end up seeing a unit in social studies followed by then a unit in science or every other day might be science content and social studies content. But we're trying as much as we can to pull it into that balanced lit framework. So when teachers are doing their shared reading or their interactive read aloud, it might be on a topic that's social studies-related to buy you some time later in the day so that you don't necessarily have to start from scratch. Totally confused you even more, but I think it's more just, it's trying to buy as much time as you can. So looking at the day differently instead of in isolated segments.
My question, Mr. Penala should be addressed to you or Mr. Chittin then about the parent support?
Oh, well, fire away.
Well, I think it's very intuitive, very receptive and includes parents, obviously, at an early stage. Had the school night, you say, started and how are we following up on that? And how is it going so far? Because I think that parent supporting this is going to be crucial to pulling this off.
There was one other piece that I didn't talk about that, it came up in, kind of in September, I think. It was the homework helpers. So Mr. Penala introduced the teachers to it, the principals know about it, teachers were aware of it. But basically, it's a homework helper for every night. So a homework goes home and parents can access it online or they can, you know, teachers can send it home as a copy with the homework. And it's really like an illustrated example of the math and how you would talk about it and how you would, you know, solve the problems. So that's kind of the companion. Another thing that we haven't talked about yet, but, you know, is a possibility that we've done in the past is a parent night for math in ELA. We've done it together before where we've presented the curriculum and the models. And last year, we had parents come and do hands-on activities where they experienced the math models and got to do what their kids do in the classroom. And that was, it was a really grandmother night, but that's a possibility.
I just think it's good to follow up on that, what you're talking about.
I think the most difficult...
It just came to back to school night and I forgot about it. Parents need to be included.
Absolutely.
It's not going to work unless the parents reinforce it, you know.
Well, and Aspen is the resource they can access as often or as little as they want. So we, the parent go to school night with to show them where the information is and then they can go there on their own. You know, I think where new math programs have been implemented and it's caused a little bit of strife is a lot of times with the homework. You know, what happens if your dad or mom's sitting at the dining room table or kitchen table and your kid is getting upset because they don't understand how to do their homework and you want to help and you look at it and you don't necessarily know how to help them with it? That's where people become really upset. That's another kudos I think I would give to our teachers. They understand the value of homework and homework is independent practice. So if they think that the kids can't independently do that work, then they don't give it. Just because a program may say, this is tonight's homework, doesn't mean they're just handing it out and sending it home in the take-home folder. They're checking for their kid's understanding of that topic. And if they're not ready for independent practice, they're not giving it. And that's helpful.
Parents buying those would be crucial to this, I think. I mean, it's happened sometimes in that stuff.
Are there any other questions for the board?
Thank you so much.
Excellent.
That's worth it.
Thank you.
That's again.
I know two or two items I have.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Okay, the new business, do I have a motion for new business? All those motion for new business, items G one, A through E, two, A through H, three, G and K. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, in favor of approving items G one, A through E, G two, A through H, and G three, G and K, please say aye.
Are there any visitors wishing to speak?
I actually did not plan to speak tonight, but after hearing Andrew Friedman's presentation, I do wish to, I actually wish he was still here. I listened very intently to his presentation. I feel that it was really one-sided, very biased, and when you guys discuss these matters, please take that into consideration, that that was what came off to me as an activist, there was no neutrality there at all. You know, a lot of this was exemplified in his non-answers to a lot of the questions. I think some very good questions were asked, and he didn't have answers for them. If you really listened, he talked circularly, because there were no answers. For example, Mr. Vivallo brought up the point about how apparently you're not supposed to tell parents if there's a kid who's transgender and haven't told their parents. Okay, that's that. But then, when he said, okay, well, what about, you know, cutting, are we not supposed to tell them? His answer was so vague and gray, and my point here is, it's a total double standard. It's like, new rules are being set every time that it comes up. I think that that just exemplified a real double standard. And I feel that when he talked about, oh, you know, we need to educate people, I don't think he's talking about educating people, he's talking about persuading people and indoctrinating people. And, you know, I just, I just feel that his, his presentation was very one-sided, and I feel that that has to be taken account, into account. You can't just go with what he's saying. Think about it for yourselves and look into it. I suggest you all read Title Nine for yourselves. I did, and he said, oh, it's very clear. It's really, it's, it's not what he said. If you read it, it doesn't say those things that he said that it said. It's a matter of interpretation. And, you know, he, oh, here's another very good example of the double standard. You know, it came up about, well, what if there's kids who are making a joke, and they say, oh, okay, I'm transgender, so I'm going to go use the girls' bathroom, and you all talked about, well, there should be harsh punishment for that kid. Well, who's to say? Because if we're not supposed to question a kid who, you know, allegedly truly is transgender, and we're not supposed to question that, we're literally just supposed to take his word for it, then why aren't we supposed to take the other kid's word for it? My point is there's double standards all over the place and hypocrisies all over the place. So if, if you can't question it for one person, you shouldn't question it for another person, and you better figure out rules that work for everybody. And my biggest point here is, another thing that he did not answer, Mr. Stanley brought a very good question, what about dignity for all students? Not just the one in one thousand that we're talking about here. And the reason I use that number is because I did the math, maybe it's a little bit different, but generally. We have to worry about all the students. And when Mr. Stanley asked that question, he literally said that he stumbled, he gave some vagities, and then he basically said that the rights of that transgender trump the rights of everybody else. That's what I heard him saying. So dignity for all students should be dignity for all students, not just certain individuals. So I guess the point of what I'm saying here is that this, you know, quote-unquote expert here, I think was really just an activist, and I think you need to consider all sides of it before just taking everything he said for word.
Thank you, Dr. Pennella. Dr. Lane, I wanted to speak to something you had brought up at one of the previous meetings, and it's just a thought, but the concern about taping and broadcasting these meetings. New York State passed, the taxpayers passed a $2 billion New York State tech bond, and I heard something on the radio, I thought that could probably fit into that, to cover a big part of that, the equipment costs, et cetera. Long-term costs, as a taxpayer, I'm happy to pay that, so that the community can hear what's going on. But getting to costs, when I was thinking about costs, I thought to myself, these presentations are fantastic, this stuff is great. This morning, voting in Smallwood, I saw all the new Eureka math books, the Eureka app, the videos, I mean, the, how much does this stuff cost? I will say to taxpayers here in Amherst, as a teacher in Buffalo, our new webpage is fantastic, and I'm sure there's terrific utilities to it. It's the same one we have in Buffalo. First student is the same bus, bus company we have in Buffalo. You guys use Aspen, you use Infinite. Buffalo owns ten to fifteen, twenty, I don't know how expensive these programs are, but we just seem to be getting more and more programs that have terrific utilities, and I appreciate the board weighing those public benefit and taxpayer costs, but since we have a concern for cost, I just wanted to bring that up. And then secondly, I want to compliment terrifically Ms. Pasquale and Chittenden for a wonderful presentation. As a fellow teacher, I've been on quite a few curriculum committees, textbook committees, et cetera. You did wonderful work. Just took one Google search, EdReports.com is a company, a nonprofit, which only means they don't pay taxes, funded by Bill Gates. The problem with the report that they issued was not that it was a bad report favoring one book, it's that these financial ties are in there, and of course, Eureka Math comes out again. So if parents didn't like what they had last year because of the approach, it's still Common Core. And as many of you know, that's where I'm going to end up. When I unsuccessfully ran for board, I remained a passionate opponent to the Common Core. These shifts that we talk about, we're shifting to old models. Closed reading I heard about tonight, that's B.F. Skinner, early 20th century behavioralist patterns. It is not creative, it's nothing new, it's expensive. It's never been field-tested, it cannot prove to say that it's making kids college and career-ready, and yet we just keep purchasing more of this and buying this. And the thing that, if you can hear the upset in my voice, with all due respect, Mr. Pennella, this is exactly, exactly the problem we as taxpayers have with the Common Core, that the days where social studies and science, we just don't have time for it at elementary. When do we lose math? And art, and PE, and recess, and play? I mean, these things are very expensive.
Your three minutes are up, thank you.
It's five minutes, isn't it?
No, it's three.
Okay. And cutting out the variance report, as a matter of transparency, please.
I thought as a teacher. It was just an invitation to the board. I don't want to ask them afterwards.
We would be happy to ask afterwards.
Afterwards, oh, okay, yep.
Just for consistency.
Yes, thank you. Just wanted to make a point. Several years ago, I think it was about five years ago, several parents came forward to the board and raised concerns about math investigations and that program, and the board decided to stick with that program. Based on the ratings that we've seen tonight and the change to Eureka, maybe the board should have paid more attention to those parents in the past. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Yes, we should, yes, thank you, Mrs. Glorhoff. We ask that people stand up, introduce themselves, and state where they live. Mr. Stockman was much better at that than I have been so far, but I appreciate the
Do we have a follow-up, Ashen?
Is that the senior?
Yes. Any suggestions for agenda items for the meeting? And with that, do we have a motion to change the discussion? All those in favor? Meeting is adjourned.